Okay, you're live. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, first thing, we need to add an addition, I mean, I'll make a motion that we add an item five, the winner activities attendance to new business. Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and then I will make the motion to adopt the agenda as well. Second?
We're just adopting it as amended.
Adopted, yeah, with the amended as well.
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh, delegation?
No delegation.
No delegation? Uh, since agenda. We had correspondence.
Do you have correspondence? So I have two, thank you cards. Uh, Dear Board, uh, 420 and IT team, thank you just not even begin to cover the appreciation and excitement for the interactive TV for use in the music room. I'm so grateful, uh, for the support and wonderful atmosphere here at OCES, Rolena Delano. And then finally, uh, dear USD 420 board members, Thanksgiving meal was delicious, teachers and staff, student interns feel truly blessed for your support of OCES. This is definitely a season to be thankful. Sincerely, OCES, teachers and staff, and future educators.
Treasures report.
Okay, Treasury report, not really a whole lot on there this month. Uh, I'm back on the Treasury report front page. And we did get some money back on November from the state and the general fund, four hundred seventeen thousand ninety-six dollars. And we also got a little bit of food service money that month. Nothing really too exciting else on that side of the page. On the backside, we did get some title funds for Title One, an amount of thirty-six thousand fifty-seven, and some Title Two money. Uh, that's sixty-five eighty-nine. Move back to petty cash reimbursement. The elementary needs two hundred dollars, the middle school needs twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents. The superintendent needs twenty-five dollars. Bills. Front page of the bills or page one, uh, first thing you see is some high school basketball uniforms. And that money, we just, they're slow on getting us billed. That was actually encumbered from way back. So that's been paid for for a long time, but they're just billing us. Didn't say anything else on the first page that was no too noteworthy. On the page two, fall at school solutions. Uh, you see that that's for the elementary and high school. That's the library software program that we use for checking in, checking out, keeping track of books. That's a yearly thing. Um, down towards the bottom, uh, you see we are using some of that Sparks money to that thank you card is a part of that. We're getting from, uh, updating some of the outdated equipment to help our teachers with remote learning. And that's interactive TVs, that's really helping out. We're probably, we've got, I think that equated to about eleven. Also, you see that first actual bill was for hotspots. We've got some, uh, kids that can't, that can't get on with the internet. So we've just had to continuously have to get some of those out. Um, on page three, uh, let's see, I think too noteworthy, the southeast Kansas education down there is a virtual learning. Uh, that's our, that's our virtual payment to, uh, Greenbush. That we, we have some kids that do virtual learning and we pay them. And then, uh, we get the FTE, but we have to pay them a share of that. Um, and then on the bottom, Three Lakes Educational Co-op, that's our third assessment payment. That's not flow-through, that's our third assessment from us in amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
One more or two more?
One more, hopefully. We don't have five. You know, sometimes we get that fifth assessment and we hope not to get that. We seem to be in pretty good shape, so I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but you just really never know this early.
So who's in charge of ordering like the smart TVs and stuff?
Andy.
I would like to make sure that we give a big thank you to Andy or whoever has teamed us with that for keeping this business in our local area.
Yeah, we are, we're trying to keep that money as close to home as possible. So, and it's, we're not done there. We have, uh, just, that's a good time to bring that up. With our Sparks money, I, I kept hearing and kept hearing that we might get an extension on that to not have to spend that by December thirty-first. After our payroll, we, we decided we had about thirty thousand left. Uh, we've been taking a lot of COVID subs, different things like that, those hotspots. Um, so we have some more of those. We'd like to replace more of that old equipment because it's going to make life a lot easier for the teachers and the remote learners. So we probably have about eleven more of those. And I, instead of worrying about whether we can extend it or not, we're just going to go ahead and do that and, uh, and use that money and not worry about if we get an extension or not, because that's a good place to use it for us anyway. So we'll, next month, you'll see another interactive TV purchase, probably close to spending all that money to get that done. That still leaves us CARES money to, that we don't have to spend by the thirty-first. We're trying to leave that for salary for the second half.
That's the first batch, right?
That's the first batch, yep.
But we'll still have CARES for the second semester or for the next half year.
Yes, and we will not, try not to use very much of that, uh, for, you know, if we had, just for the essential things because we feel like that it's going to be needed to pay our sub salaries for COVID expenditures.
Of those two invoices, how many TVs is that?
I think eleven.
I thought I heard you say that.
Eleven, and I think we have approximately eleven or twelve more in that range that we'd like to do. And we, I want to, we do appreciate TJ working with us. It's been really a good cooperative agreement on that. Uh, he's got us a really quality product and it's working really well, so. Amen, addendums. We have approximately after November, we're getting close to halfway through, about seventy-three point six-four percent on the general left and about ninety-two point five-five percent left of the budget remaining on the LOB. So we feel like we're in pretty good shape at this point in the year on that. And that's really all I have, unless you have any questions that I skipped over, anything you want to ask about.
I beg to motion we adopt the minutes of the regular board meeting of November eleventh, two thousand twenty to adopt the minutes of the special board meeting of November twenty-third, two thousand twenty uh, to approve the treasurer's report of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty to reimburse the petty cash in the elementary school of two hundred dollars, the middle school of twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents, superintendent's office of twenty-five dollars. Payment of the bills and the amount to be allowed in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents for December ninth, two thousand twenty, and November payroll in an amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. Second, aye?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Old business, uh, board discussion on calendar adjustment. So since our last meeting, we have talked to some teachers and, and kind of come to a little bit of agreement. Though the, the state come out and changed everything yesterday. So there's new info from the state regarding time relief for the teachers. I'm going to turn it over to Troy because he has more of that information than I do at this point.
Okay, yesterday, uh, the, first of all, I'd like to, the situation that the teachers came and talked to us about last, at our last board meeting, that's not just exclusive dosage city. That is a statewide thing. It is not just here. Uh, and for that reason, they've been talking about some relief for the one thousand one hundred and sixteen hour rule across the state. How can we help teachers as far as, you know, they need that time? The one thing that we kept hearing from all the teachers, time would be helpful, time would be helpful. And, you know, that and just the stress. Uh, yesterday, the Kansas State Board of Education passed a motion to allow schools to apply for a waiver of up to twenty hours for forgiveness, and that equals about three days, uh, from that one thousand one hundred and sixteen hour requirement. And the purpose of this waiver, uh, from the State Board of Education is to allow schools to give some teachers and staff opportunity for much-needed time. That time can be used for a, several things. It could be used for professional development. It can be used for collaboration. Uh, I think even parent-teacher conferences was listed as something. But for the most part, it can be PD or collaboration time, um, or both, or a combination of. Um, and again, this came out, uh, yesterday from the state board because of the statewide recognition that teachers needed some time and that most schools front-loaded, like we did, the beginning of the year and used PD and collaboration time. So if you remember, what we did is we robbed some snow days and we moved them, three snow days. And we made those PD days and we moved all of our four half-day collaboration days to the beginning of the year. Um, so in essence, we did the same thing that most other schools did. We front-loaded that. So I think that was a, a very, uh, good move on the state board's part to help our teachers across the state in this pandemic year, I guess we'd say. Pandemic year, I guess we'd say, uh, but we what we would have to do is apply for that waiver to get twenty hours and what. How that works is they're gonna give you twenty hours and it's a one for one. Uh, it and what that means is if you if you use twenty hours, you get to count twenty hours like you're at school. It's not taking away contact hours is what that means. Is that is that clear? I said, I don't know if I'm explaining that very well, but you don't. If you'd use P D days normally, you get half time, you get counted as half. This time they're gonna say or collaboration, collaboration time really doesn't count, it doesn't count at all, P D get half colla-. Now they're saying you can use it for P D, you can use it for collaboration, use it however you really want like in that realm. And it doesn't, it's not gonna count against your hours at all, so.
So we would basically do getting back what we front loaded and the.
It y- yes, in a sense.
Yeah.
It like we took, we took three snow days uh out of all our snow days, stockpiling all all of our collaboration half days. To do to get that time at the beginning to learn how to do remote learning.
So from a teacher standpoint, this will give them three days of non-contact, they can use it for prepping.
Yeah, they could use it for us. Clap with you, I'm not gonna say it, we wouldn't have some things, but we would try to be very loose with what we had involved with those days. It get when we say collaboration, they can collaborate with each other, they could prep. You know, definitely when you collaborate with it, you you could use it for collaborating and getting ready for remote learning, you could talk about what. What's going on.
So could be more than that then?
In a sense, you know, I don't think we wanna go out cold.
So does the state tell us? Let's say a teacher decides they just want a day off and they use a discretionary day on that day?
They could.
So do we have to make a motion to apply for the waiver?
Uh, ye- yes, I would say we would need a motion to apply for the waiver and I'd like to to. If if the board does that, make that motion to apply for that waiver, I'd like to recommend that. We uh get together with the teachers and probably get a teacher from each building to help us. Let them decide where they wanna take those days, I guess, um, to me.
Can that be applied to what we were talking about last uh time with the special meeting about?
Exactly.
This would be in lieu of.
That would be in lieu of that, Dave, it would be instead of taking half days or whatever, I mean, you can split that twenty hours up. In different way, any different ways you want to, but it it equate it equates to three full days. Or you can do a partial or whatever.
There's twenty hours however you do it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So if they if the plan that we talked about last meeting was. Uh, to be effective with this was to take half day or a couple hours on Friday every other week.
Well, I think the plan was to get the recommendation from the teachers.
Yeah, I'd like to.
So I think we'd still go back to having them recommend what they want.
What I'm saying is we don't have to take three days, we can do the hours.
Right.
You can do whatever, you can split it up however you want, yes.
Right, right now, we just gotta make the motion to apply for the waiver to say we make sure we get the waiver.
Yeah.
So probably what we need to do is make that motion and table this till the January meeting. Cause then we'll have all the information, we'll know whether it's approved to the statewide, the teachers' recommendation, the administration's.
I just wanted to pr- I wanted to uh. The uh make the recommendation, we'd go to the teachers and get their input on that.
So we need a mo- I would make a motion that we apply for the waiver to the state to get the twenty hours and move for the teachers. Aye.
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 I have some question on this, so you know, we wanted to move on those dates. Tonight in order to prep families and parents for whatever those days might be in January, February. Do we think we need to have a special board meeting in the next week? I don't even know.
I don't think so, we've come back with our next board meeting, is it on the thirteenth of January?
I think that's right. Yes, it is.
Happy birthday, we'll see, we'll be able to celebrate, uh.
January thirteenth is.
I think January thirtieth is correct.
I think Kat, if we come back with a recommendation on the thirteenth. It would give enough time, I would think, a couple, two or three weeks probably of prep time for, I'm guessing.
Because the teachers get that Monday after their off.
When we come back on the fifth is our first day.
Come back the sixth, fifth.
Teachers come back the fifth.
And then we have our meeting the very next week.
And then two weeks later though is a a scheduled day off to.
Uh, it's, yes, what is that day on that?
I'm just thinking, I don't think January is a day maybe they might not play.
President, president stays in there sometimes. It's president day, Martin's a two day.
Yes.
Cause I'm a blue guy, I'm I wanna know like if we're gonna get parents enough time off.
Yeah, especially if they were thinking, you know, a couple hours on two different Fridays in January then.
Now, the what you're saying kind of depends on how the teachers feel like they wanna split it up though.
Yeah.
And I guess if they're if they're wanting it to do it in full days in January. Or even full days in January, February, we probably need to get that approved. Prior, I mean, just so the parents can find out, it's not fair to.
Have the teachers came to us with anything yet?
Hmm, well, we we put out.
The idea was the.
Ha- the early, the late.
We, oh, I had those days, the twenty eighth of January.
Well, we put out to the teachers.
Fourth of the January, February tenth, February twenty fourth.
Yeah.
And then January thirteenth on there, but that's the night of the work, so that was doing the four half day or the two hour or three or whatever. And then Troy and I talked about another thing, a person with, we talked about it and it was pretty much everybody thought that would be okay. However, it took some negotiating on a master contract, so. Now we don't have to worry about that, we could use this program kind of the same way and utilize it the same way, so I think we have a pretty good understanding. That the teachers right now, I think, like the idea of the three full days.
You guys have an inclination on that?
Well, I haven't talked to any teachers about this.
I really.
I'm just basing that off of what the discussion we had, but this might change things now because I mean. I I don't know, I guess it's the day, but if we wait till January, I mean, we can't really do anything tonight because it's not gonna. And we don't know how quick, I'm gonna guess with the holidays, we're not gonna hear from the state probably till the first one of January.
I'm going to assume it's gonna be a rubber stamp approval on the on this, or they wouldn't have put it out.
Well, weren't we gonna, we were giving the teachers essentially three free days? So they wouldn't necessarily have to take a discretionary day.
Oh, what?
I mean, if if with this, yes, it is, I mean, I understand. Would be loose collaboration, you know, but for them to completely get that day off, they would still have to use it.
It's not a day off.
It wasn't ever designed to be a day off, they needed relief from to do their other planning and stuff, so that's where the issue, but.
But I thought part of the discussion was is it was it was gonna be up to them whether they 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 can use that day how they choose to use that day.
Oh, that wasn't my understanding. Yeah, but that wasn't my understanding, my understanding it was to give them time to prepare so they.
I thought the.
Can relax a little bit, so I guess. This sounds like it's taking the place of that because it is specifically designed for them to use to prepare and relieve some of the stress of constantly being on the go. That's just my understanding.
We are not planning on packing those days up, I'm just gonna tell you that. I don't wanna say we w- we don't wanna offer them some things, but we're not gonna pack them up, they're gonna be pretty. We want them to be able to use the time to help themselves, that's what this was all about. And cl- for them to come out and put collaboration in there helps us do that.
So the thing I remember from the other night was. A lot of them felt like they could not use a discretionary day at any time because they were afraid they couldn't find a sub, they couldn't do this or whatever. On these days, you have to worry about subs, so if they wanna use a discretionary day and not come in at all, they can do that. And not all of them, they use one, use two, I mean, whatever, but it still gives them both, it gives them both the evidence.
I just wanted clarity on what those days are, the purpose of those days. Cause you don't want to then have them assume that, hey, it's a free day. But then I gotta come back and I, you know, which I I would assume that most of them would utilize it as a workday essentially.
I would.
As as they see fit, so.
I I I just think we just need to be flexible and hear them out, cause it could be they just wanna work from home for a little bit, take a break, I mean, I.
I think the language the state used in the waiver does not, it's not gonna allow, it's not working on homes.
Yeah, it really does not, this waiver does not need that.
What's your, what are you thinking, Kat? I mean, if they're. Able to be in their classroom without having to worry about remoting with P kids or covering.
Yeah, but you know, if it's collaboration, could they do it physically somewhere else? You know, still be in six feet apart with their other teacher groups, you know, if they want to and it's. You know, collaboration, but also just, hey, let's.
Oh, I thought you said more, I thought you said more promote.
How are we, how are we all doing, right, maybe it's from someone's house, but six feet apart, you know, it's like, does it uh? Do we have to mandate certain things or can there be some flexibility with it just from a head states first, okay?
I don't think we got a choice on that from the state, I mean, the state says it has to be here, isn't that correct?
I don't really know that they ever really talked about that to be quite honest with you, but it's um. That's how I understood it, I said, I don't know, uh, they they didn't really specify that. They talked a lot about P D and collaboration time, so how that they didn't need any of that.
So do you need a motion to table that or do we just?
Um. Yes, I would say we make a motion to table that this item until the next board meeting and then we'll come, try to come back with a recommendation from the teaching staff. Is what I would like.
And if we have suggestions, that gives us time to make suggestions too that we can have at the same time, I guess. So I would make the motion, we table the uh counter adjustment or the motion or the up. The waiver from the state, then we table that to the January board meeting.
I will go ahead and apply for the waiver.
Yes, we made that motion.
Okay, yeah.
Second, aye.
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 Aye. Uh, new business.
Um, we didn't, Andy brought us in the technology and uh user agreement, we just, we really because of we are. Because of the covid situation and the need to live streams, live stream so much more than we have in the past, we needed to strike some of that. Um, because it's that language and I think I sent that out. Um, it's just done, it's due to the fact that we're doing so much of that, it's pretty much unavoidable that we have some students that are identifiable. And that's what that was all about, so we just need a motion uh to approve those revisions and that technology agreement.
Good, I'd make the motion, we approve the revisions to the technology user agreement. Second, aye.
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 Uh. The next item is specifically a technicality that we need for uh. Uh, E rate purposes and that's approval of the internet safety policy, uh, CIPA com- for CIPA compliance. And that motion needs to read uh to approve the internet safety policy for CIPA compliance, it's just a. We have to have that in a board meeting for uh E rate purposes. And we've approved that policy before, but never that specific motion.
I would make the motion, we approve the internet safety policy for C I P A CIPA reports. Second, aye.
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 That, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Three Lakes report.
Hasn't happened yet, so that's next one.
And then finally, yeah, recreation report.
Uh, we talked about basketball um at the time. Uh, prior to, or let's see here where am I at? Um, the Scott Brown League is the third through sixth grade youth basketball league we play in. And we chose uh to push back the start of our season to January twenty third. Uh, typically it would have started like the second Saturday of January. Um, with the and and we did that prior to. The November uh twenty fifth. Kasha meeting about when they set up their initial winter activity proposal and restrictions. So. And then right now, K ball and first and secondary basketball are kind of up in the air. Um, and we, I right, I haven't sent any information out about either. Uh, we are uh right now, we would like to piggyback them on Sunday evening. Where K ball goes from five to six versus secondary basketball goes from six to seven. Um, but uh that hasn't been officially approved yet, cause we're. Again, with all this limbo with Kasha, it's kind of hard to plan that, not really knowing what what they may do or could do. Um, provided an update about the November eleventh board meeting, uh, smoking the spring had happened. Uh, October weekend, so review that. Uh, I am a nominee for one of the four board of director seats for KCBS. Um, that voting will be in January, so hopefully I get one of those spots, if not, no big deal. And then I provided them with the proposal that the uh that the Kasha board of directors. Would have received for that November twenty fourth meeting, cause that meeting happened after our parks and rec meet or advisory board meeting, so. And then December seventeenth is our next scheduled meeting, so.
Alright, uh, activity attendance discussion.
Since uh, well, you guys have probably been following us as close as anybody, but yes, was it Tuesday, yesterday? Seems like it's been longer than that, they uh.
I agree.
It does.
They they uh board of directors, they went to the appeals board to allow. They came out with a motion to allow one or two parents, the board of directors went through their song and dance yesterday and uh. They they came out with a motion uh and approved it effective Thursday, December tenth. With uh tomorrow through January twenty eighth. Interscholastic activities will allow for attendance of up to two parents or guardians. Per participant's family as allowed by local board of education or health department restrictions. So we've we've got to do some, we've got to decide a little bit of about how we're gonna handle that. Uh, health department restrictions, I think if I remember, we don't have a number restriction at the time. But we have guidance from her, ins- door activities is not the smartest thing in the world at this present time. So we really don't have anything. Uh, you know, that it's a mandate. But uh, so what we have to do is talk about, and I'm gonna let these guys, A Ds, talk about this. How that impacts us and and some some of the things we have to talk about.
So initially, the 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 motion named them as athletes, so they were gonna allow one or two per athlete. But the board of directors changed it to participants and uh Mr. Flaplet came out with uh. Uh, just this evening and made a clarification of what participants are. And the list are players, coaches, student managers, cheer squad coach, cheer squad coaches. Dance team coaches, pep bands, directors and student journalists. So those are all the people that are considered participants. And um to allow, and I'll speak for the high school right now. Um, we have thirty boys out for basketball, eighteen girls, nine cheer, ten dance, thirty two band. I didn't count managers, photographers, uh, usually three student photographers. Um, A V club, I have five kids that are doing the broadcasting uh and running cameras and then coaches. Um, if I add those up. Um, you know, it's fifty seven people. And so um basketball and cheer, well, if I only did basketball and cheer, the original purpose of this was. To if somebody was injured, it wasn't about coming in and watching your kid out of enjoyment because the videos are going. The concern by the board was that if somebody's injured or hurt. And then the liability of what might be on the school or on a coach or something like that, that a parent is there to assist with medical needs. And so we did hire an E M test, E M Ts to stand by and and do that, but now with allowing the parents in. Um, you know, looking at who really are the risk, and that's kind of what I weighed out. Who's really at risk of getting injured and and then thinking about what what are those parents being into the ball games? And so just thinking of all the different things, I mean, I I don't think I've ever had a band member get injured. Um, dancers, never, a couple cheerleaders over the years, but obviously basketball players. So if we remember what the purpose of why the parents are there, um, kind of helps me think about what we may or may not wanna do. So if I look at just the basketball players and cheer, the ones that are probably at high risk at um injury. By the way, cheer can't stunt right now, so that injury risk even comes down, so they're not, you know, lifting people up in the air and tossing them around, things like that, so. That injury even has uh come down. So the high school, that'd be fifty-seven people, just players and cheerleaders. So if we allowed and coaches and then that, if we allowed two, um, for that, that would be a hundred and fourteen. Parents or guardians to to come into the ball game. I think a hundred and fourteen people, we could socially distance inside of our gymnasium. However, if we look at all participants, I'm upward to about a hundred and fifteen students. And I'm counting band, I'm counting A V, photographers, all the students are in the building. And that's about a hundred and um fifteen students. Multiply that by two, that's two hundred and thirty parents. Uh, I don't believe we could keep social distance in the gym. When we were working on this initially, when we were talking about fifty percent capacity, way back in the first motion. Um, when I did the measurement of the bleachers, our fifty percent capacity was two eighty-seven. Two eighty-seven, that's only leaving twenty-four inches between people, thinking fifty percent capacity. So at two thirty, I don't think there's any way we would be able to stay socially distanced.
I have a quick question, when we did the middle school at four tickets, uh, about how many was that?
We had around seventy kids.
So about two eighty tickets counted out?
Yeah.
And how was your feelings upon?
The the thing that went real well at the middle school, which is one of these points down here uh on number five is when we stress to. Leave after your kids' game was over, and if if parents do that, I think we can't allow more and that's what worked real well in the middle school, is parents were only.
We need to pick up. Yeah.
Coming for their their students' game and they were leaving afterwards, so that made it, uh, it seemed like there was a lot more space.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to.
Tony, quick question. Back then, we had the six foot social distancing, but now we have if both people were on a mask, that throws that out the window. So do we still need to have the six foot if they were going to wear masks?
Well, I think CDC and the health department says we shouldn't have indoor gatherings unless social distancing can be maintained between family groups.
I guess we didn't let you say your recommendation, sorry, you were just going through the numbers still.
So, and and number five is correct, and and I think we could, and that's what I was gonna get to. If we could convince our parents to leave after their kids are done playing, I think we would be able to do two. Um, per uh participant. Um, however, I mean, I don't know how many band people actually come and watch, but again, these are actual parents and guardians. It can't be aunts and uncles and mom's best friend's neighbor, they have to be parent or a guardian. Uh, can't be grandpa or something like that, so it has to be that, so if we could convince our parents to leave when their kids are done playing. I think we'd be okay, cause C team would be done or in another gym. Uh, J V is done at fourth, you know, they played the first game at four thirty. If they were done playing, the kids that didn't stay to suit up for varsity, if they were released and able to leave. At least the parents leave, sometimes the kids stay with the team because of the team aspect and learning the game. But if the parents, if I could convince them to leave, then I I think we would be alright and be able, I mean, it'd be something we could trot. And if we could get more, I don't know what's better, to be more restrictive at first and allow more in?
Yeah, it's something, yeah.
Or allow them in and then become more restrictive because our crowd is too big.
I guess I, um, I haven't seen it near thirty-two band members when they've been panning on the band members, I don't, I think we're probably pretty safe there, but. I don't know, my opinion is two hundred and eighty people across all of our stands, even if they did stay for the entire time, whether we have two gyms going the whole time. Because there's the six games, so there's always two gyms going, I just. I thought based on our counts and everything that we did during middle school, it, the numbers didn't seem too out of bounds, the two eighty doesn't, but.
Is that just our numbers or is that including both sides?
That's, that's just our numbers, and that was another one of the recommendations I would, because of our visiting side. I would probably ask visiting teams to only bring one parent. And that's just be what I would ask them to do, because the visiting side is just so small. Leaving the two in sections on the visiting side for visitors to sit in, isn't much space, there's no room, I don't want them by the teams.
Right.
I don't want them in that area, I have the A V club up there now, and so I would only want the visiting teams in those two sections, but.
So Tony, would that potentially be allowing for the visiting side? Just one per participant then?
Yeah.
And that would fit safely?
If I can convince parents to leave.
Well, and if we, on the away, would they be restricted on what we allow into the gym as?
Yeah, so on the way, every.
Is that player, coach and cheerleader?
We'll have to watch the updates.
Every school is gonna be different, like our wrestling team's going to Clay Center Saturday, they're still not allowing any spectators. Our basketball's going to Iola, they're allowing two. So even though what we do here, it could be different at every location, that's the only problem with them giving this local control. Is it, it's different, it could be different everywhere we go, it could be two, it could be one, it could be none.
The good news is, you guys have done a great job, I'd say with the activity updates, so I think our, as parents, we're just used to, okay, do I even get to go to what's happening, going on there? But back to our own.
Really looking for guidance from you folks, what what we really want to do here. Um, I give you the numbers and the precautions and 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 what you feel like we would want to do for our community.
What's your recommendation out of this stuff?
If, my recommendation, if we did all participants and they weren't leaving, I would do one parent. If it was just the players and the cheerleaders, the ones that are at risk, then I would do two. But um, if it's, if I could convince parents to leave.
So can we post signs at the event and on our website with the recommendation that after your uh participant is done with their activity, that you pack it up and?
I mean, for middle school, we said to do it.
We definitely.
So are high school parents more difficult than middle school parents?
I don't think so, I mean, I'm.
I never was at a game where I felt crowded at all and I left to sit in the back.
I don't think you'd ever see the full max getting used for the band, dance, whatever, it's not even good.
I would.
It's a middle.
I think we would want to do the two.
And the dance, people might come for that boys' halftime.
The middle school parents did a fantastic job of coming to watch their kid and leaving.
Right, and and they.
And that helped so much.
And what is that middle school number?
And and it was a directive.
For.
Two eighty.
Yeah, we had, we had around seventy kids out, the the big difference, we were just.
And we were gonna four tickets up.
Right.
And so we were at this stage.
The big difference though is we don't, we didn't have a band, which that's gonna take up a whole section of your bleachers.
Right.
Well, in Kasha, though, I watched every meeting Kasha's had, it's been entertaining for a while.
It was, it was.
But when I, when they changed the language from athlete to participant, that vote was not even close. And when they passed the final resolution, that vote wasn't even close, I mean, it was fifty-something to twenty-something. So they started out, I agree, with liability, athlete, one parent, but it.
It got involved, yeah.
It changed really fast in that meeting on Tuesday, so.
So I, I mean, I I can go, I mean, I, there's like three options there, so I. I need your guidance.
It's probably easier to be more restrictive and loosen up than vice versa, isn't it?
It's been my experience.
My recommendation would be to approve it, ask Kasha to approve it yesterday.
Say that one more time.
My recommendation would be to approve it, ask Kasha to approve it yesterday.
That, I like, I like the two, and then you can always restrict it from there, because it's simple. You're gonna have a better idea of how many number of people are gonna show up. Right now, unless you went to somebody and put out a list and said, I wanna know who's coming to the game with you. And if we got that number, then we'd have a real number, but if we're using two hundred and thirty as our number, I don't think that number is true. I mean, I've been to a lot of all games and the numbers haven't been close, I have no fight in the high school, uh, cause I got no kids in the high school plans of sports, so. But for my parent, I wouldn't wanna have to make a decision on whether I get to go or my wife goes. I don't think that's a choice that we need to put out there that we're laying that on on our family, so. I would think that we would want to allow the two, just like Kasha's done. See how it goes and then you can amend accordingly, I mean, there, you're gonna have certain games that are gonna be a disaster, if you got Landon here, somebody that's close, but. Most ti- most guy games, we're not gonna worry about too much. And if we limit the number of the visiting team, keeps them off our side and that fixes a lot of that too, so.
Yeah, Tony, from a visiting perspective, is it just basketball players and coaches, managers that are traveling? Like, or, you know, cheer team, any of that even allowed to go?
Cheer and dance, well, the cheer.
I think we can stipulate that.
Yeah, we can stipulate that, the the cheer's not gonna go Saturday, cause they're basically one game to cheer at, so they're not even gonna go. It's not worth it, I mean.
What about coming here, are we limiting um when they come to?
When they come here, we've talked about that at different times, some schools says we're not sending our cheer. Um, and some schools says we wanna send our cheer, so some schools have regulated that themselves. Um, I know our cheerleaders have said that they would like to to go on Friday night games and not Tuesday away games. Uh, and so that gives them a little bit of relief and then it's school night and, um, just just helping out in that way, so. Um, everybody's a little bit different.
I think we'll also have not, I think there'll be numbers less than what we think, only because you'll have parents that have young kids at home. And because kids aren't, siblings aren't part of this.
I gave you maximum numbers, yeah.
Exactly, so I think that's, as I'm thinking through, there's gonna be a lot of cases where the other parent, one parent's gonna go to the game and one parent's gonna stay home with the younger. Siblings, so.
When the, when the parents arrive, do they check in? I mean, I, do they go through a pass gate, obviously?
Well, there'll be the gate at the front door, because we only have that one door open, because it takes temp checks. So everybody comes in, the door's getting temp checked, and then we would probably have a list of, we can pull it off of Power School. Mom and dad for everybody, guardian, whoever it is, and then they would come into the door and we'd just check them off, they would pay their money and come in, so. I don't like to use the word pass gate, because I think that's a free pass, but it is a pass gate that they can come in and.
But uh, middle school tend to even have separate tables for a lay at home when you came to check in.
I know this was brought up under the.
I've not had to experience that, yeah.
I know this was brought up under Kasha, but if you have two children playing, it's still only one set of parents.
So it's parents, two per family participant, so if you have three in that family, it's still only two.
So we're not dealing with a ticket situation.
Right, so it's not just wristbands that you're handing out and you can jockey them around, it's it's the parent.
Did you offer any guidance, cause they list coaches as a participant, so the coaches, mom and dad can come watch?
No, and that's.
Says on here now, since.
No.
Coaches may have parents, guardians or spouse, significant other.
I'm like, that's just.
Children of.
I thought that's fair.
It says children of coaches and administrators do not meet the definition. So even the children of coaches and and um administrators are are not counted.
But if my parents wanna come watch me, principal, they can come watch me.
Well, here's an opportunity.
I was just wondering like, cap can go.
Bring your parents over. I thought that was funny language too, honestly, when I was.
Yeah, event staff are not afforded parent, guardians or spouse attendance. I'm not, ticket takers, scorekeepers, things like that.
So I mean, I'm comfortable with, you know, two parents, two guardians for each participant, but I still like the idea of, okay, if your participant is only this game. Then you're here for that game and you go, I just think that gives us some extra sense of um trying to distance people even further.
What do you do if you have J V and a vars- a player and J V at four thirty?
This, it supports the purpose.
That you stay.
And varsity at seven, just wondering, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're, you stay at both teams.
Yeah.
That varsity will stay at both.
You still have a participant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna get in trouble tomorrow, or anything.
I'll run you out, Kelly.
Okay.
We need a P R in that, right?
These are.
Please leave after your participant is done, but yeah.
You can put that on the announcement.
I told Kelly she could use her administrator's.
That that really would help the whole situation and allow.
I agree.
And and allow for more parents uh to come in and if if we would just, if the parents would work with us on that, just to come in and watch their own students, it's gonna help the whole situation.
I think you could put that language in, just like middle school did.
And I think they've done a good job.
And I think from my.
They have.
I had never, I never even went into the main gym during middle school, we went to Brady's game and we came home.
I think, I think addressing that at the beginning of the year, which we're in a little different situation now, I think that helped going into that, parents have done a real good job.
Do we announce that too, when the game's over?
We never, we never announced it, I just talked to both of our parents' meetings at the beginning of the year, we talked about it and.
I think people just left, yeah.
And they did it, I mean, I didn't have to, I wasn't going around, hey, I know your kid's not playing, you're leaving, I mean, that, parents did it. There was a few that stayed a little longer than they probably should have, but it wasn't a big deal.
It wasn't a problem. So Tim, what's your idea for the middle school?
Uh, for middle school, we're, we probably most likely will not have any more home games, cause the games we were. Scheduled with the other teams we're supposed to play line up in the, I don't believe one of the schools is gonna play after our our tournament. And I don't believe that the other one will be able to get in for a home game, so most likely our home season's done. So we're just more focusing on the away games, which that'll be dictated by the other schools. But I would say for middle school, if we if we did have a home game, I would be comfortable with having two still, based on kinda how the season's gone and. Where our parents have been, and a big factor in that is we don't have band and dance to worry about either.
Do we know what London's numbers are for all, or how many are allowed?
We don't know yet, I'll be sending, they're having a board meeting tonight too, and uh, I'll be sending out a email tomorrow morning, letting everyone know. I kinda sent out a letter already to parents talking about that, if it's two parents for one, just with the game being tomorrow, kinda had to get a little jump on that. And we also have a tournament on on Saturday that we'll be going to, but. Um, and again, I, that tournament on Saturday, we may not have any fans for that, I don't, I don't know where that'll go, that's just kinda. Kinda for each individual school to decide, so.
And so a big part of my communication will be telling parents to keep an eye on the activity guidelines.
Yes.
Because just the other day, we switched Can- uh Kansas City Christian Santa Fe Trail. I've had to move Chase County game down a week because of their situation, and so there's just gonna be ongoing changes, even with numbers. You know, one county might come out of more restrictions and I have to update that, so. Um, you know, people could get email numb and not listen or watch their emails, so. If I just keep that updated and educate people to watch that, then they would be able to see what they can expect. And then it always has the link for the streaming, and then it has programs, we put programs in there too for those schools, so.
So, one thing I didn't look at, maybe Mike did, I did not, but they had the one where you were not allowed to do a whole bunch of activities over Christmas break, has that changed?
That auditorium is still on, it'll go from um December twenty-third to January third.
Yeah, twenty-two, we, twenty-second through the first eight practices of horse.
Yeah.
And that works where there's no.
No practice, gyms are closed.
Gyms are closed.
No contact with coaches and athletes.
So the coaches don't go somewhere else to do a practice?
They can't go to. To Peak a gym and practice. Um, so you're still okay with me, one, one per visiting school and then two for all participants? Okay? And then ask, and asking.
And and verbiage about.
Yeah, maybe we could just give them a number, instead of saying one, give them a total number, because if they, if there's.
Well, if I give them a total number and I hit that fifty and number fifty-one comes in, I say, sorry, you can't come in.
No, but I mean, their, if their administration knows that upfront, then they can go to the students, say, hey, is your mom and dad coming? And make their numbers, so it doesn't necessarily be mom and dad, does that make sense? Let's say the number's forty, so you go to them and say, hey, there's forty spots for you guys to have people here. So I don't wanna tell you that you can only bring one parent, cause if you got forty players, but only ten parents are coming, I don't want you to show up with ten single parents, if you wanna bring twenty.
Well, in here, it says there's no substitutions for parents, it has to be a parent.
I'm not talking about substituting for parents, so I'm talking about going from one parent to two.
Oh, I see.
They're still the same parent, they're just, you're allowed two parents instead of one.
I just think it'd be cleaner if we could say one parent or three.
Again, when I go back to, if I was a parent and you told me I couldn't come watch my kid, I'd be pretty upset, I'd rather stay.
Yeah, it just puts a lot of onus, I think, on the other A Ds to very quickly say, okay, so who are my total forty or fifty, is it the first, you know, forty that sign up or call?
I'm gonna guess an A D has a pretty good idea who's going to his ballgame and who's not, it's on basketball.
Well, that's, that's gonna happen to us, we're gonna go to someplace and it's gonna be one, and that's going to happen to us, so at some point, everybody's gonna have to make that decision.
Right.
I would say because we have three live streaming. I'm not as concerned, uh, with O S H saying only one on the visitor side, only because. I'm not as concerned, uh, with O S H saying only one on the visitor's side, only because you can see the bleachers are tiny. We have a fantastic live stream, the broadcasts have been very well done.
How do the visitors get on our livestream, they go through to our?
They just go to our YouTube page. I honestly, us having to livestream others is sad sometimes because ours is so good.
And we paid. And we paid the three thousand dollars to open that up for anybody that comes to our place. So if we go to Council Grove, you gotta pay the ten dollar monthly fee to watch their game.
Really?
Yes.
I did not know that.
I didn't know that.
Yep. Now, Council Grove comes to us, so we don't have to worry about that.
Are we allowed to sell advertising on our livestream?
Uh, you can. In a lot of school, in a lot of times, what, we we didn't do that this year because we went ahead and just, uh, I think up to four. And and what a lot of schools are gonna do in the future, when they don't pay, to have that paywall down. Then you can collect advertisement to help pay that off, um, Andy and I talked somewhat about that. But we decided not to do advertisement this year, just because we're, we paid, the board paid for that.
That's an annual.
Yeah. Jay, I would like to ask the board if we're gonna vary from the Kasia language, that should be an approved motion, we should vote on that.
Well, after, we're gonna direct TV if I'm trying out there, the way I understand it, that's maybe what they'll want to do.
We're deviating it.
If we have. Well, we're changing up. Tim's recommendation was, he was fine with two, if we had a home game, Tony's was one on the way, so.
I, I don't think we, I don't, like, I don't think you need a motion because I think it gives local control and they're still.
Well, if the board doesn't approve it, there's, we didn't control anything.
No.
It's gonna, yeah, the board, the board's gonna have to vote on one way or the other, on whichever motion wants to go forward because.
If we wanna limit visitors to one, I think we need to have a motion to vote on that.
Right.
For for middle, just for, if in case we do have a home game. Uh, I don't plan on it, but if we might still in middle school, but if so, I would still like to keep that at two, just like we have been, just two and two, I think it's been working out.
For me, I don't wanna be limited for my families to, if I went somewhere, so I don't, I'm gonna put it very hard limited if you're.
So, back to that. Yeah, so back to that, Tim, so because we put in the, just leave when your people were, when your kids are done. And with the two, did it seem overly crowded on the visitor's side ever?
Um, I mean, it just.
We kind of have a case to stay at steady.
Yeah, um, I'm trying to think of any games that it seemed.
One of the things that Tim did, because we don't have a band, is he split the bleachers.
Right, I I took our home side and I, you know, I put that section over there, I did put them on our side. In middle school, it's a lot, a lot more just kids, I put all our teams on our visitor's side and no parents over there. But with high school, you can't do that with the band, that kinda shrinks your stands a little bit, so that might hurt how the, how crunched it was.
What if the band got moved to the other side, does that open up more seating on the other side?
Make it be.
If you move the band to the visiting side.
Athletes and fans.
Does that open more up on the other side?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put our kids by their kids.
Oh, that's allowed.
My, my thought was, I was trying to keep our players away from everyone else as much as possible. Um, but high school's a completely different beast too, we were able, we had a little more flexibility in that, so.
Thank you, I was just wondering, thank you.
There was probably, I mean, I think the biggest crowd I can remember was maybe, maybe Council Grove. But again, that's, our people were leaving, so that was the big, what's the four, our people were doing it. The visiting team's probably gonna stay for most of the night, I don't know if anyone else said that there.
But we were, in junior high, we were four and four, correct?
We were four and two.
Four and two.
Yeah, so that's eight per, per, so we're talking a whole lot, and if you got people leaving, then the number's gonna drop, you're not gonna have all those people. Thirty players aren't gonna shoot up for the varsity game. I'm, I, I, I think I like the way Kasia has it set up and we try that, and if it doesn't work, then we can always adopt.
To me, you look at it, if you have twelve girls shooting up for varsity away, twelve boys, that they're all there at the end of the varsity girls' game. When all the parents would be there, if they're leaving like, or asking, you're gonna have forty eight parents on the visitor's side at one time.
I'd choose four though, if you're only using two, that would.
Well, twelve, yeah, okay.
Not twelve, twelve.
If they were all there at the same time, because one game isn't over, the next game hasn't started.
And then football games, there were forty eight people across that way.
Exactly.
I mean, there were plenty of, the away stands on some of, a lot of our football games, for me, a lot of people. I don't, I keep going back and forth, I think, I look at how small those that, those sides look, but at the same time, as I think about it, I don't know why we couldn't fit them all, I don't know.
You have kids playing, you have kids playing, Mike has kids playing, I don't have, I got junior high, but junior high's not an issue, so.
I don't have junior.
But I heard you go to high school games too, so.
He can't have.
He used to, now he, now he's just a Friday night livestreamer.
He can't have.
I, I just know when it comes to varsity boys and girls, more people wanna stay and watch that game.
You're right.
Just because it's a higher level of play and they aren't as eager to leave as they might be for an eighth grade game, so.
But I don't think it can be unfair to one group of parents, cause another parent doesn't want to leave, so maybe we have to make them leave if it's not wanting to, the parents can't watch their kids. I don't know the answer to all this, but I.
No, me neither, that's why, that's why you get a done vote on it.
Yeah, I know.
To me, I think I would much rather err on the side of let them come, if it gets nuts, we can always move it around.
Are you talking two, two and one, or two and two?
Two, two and two.
Just like Kasia's put, two and two.
Well, Kasia put it up to two, they're not stating two, they said up to two.
I'm gonna read it as that, and when they say up to two, that normally means that you're gonna take two. And most people aren't gonna read that a different way, so.
I, you know, if if we did allow the visiting team to bring two, if if they would, you know, again, it's hard to police, if they would encourage their parents to leave when their kids are done, that would. Help dramatically, but it's just so hard to police that, you almost can't.
I have never seen the visitor's side even close before, for any game.
I have.
Oh, well, yeah, it does.
Other than the Linden games.
Dude.
Have you been to a mission valley game?
Council Grove.
I have forgotten.
I'm assuming there's no concession stand? Or is, is there, was there a concession stand Friday?
There was not.
So, would it be possible to take the livestream feed and broadcast in the cafeteria and have that as a spillover? If you do get into a situation where a parent wants to hang out?
Well, part, part of the reason to have a home and a visitor, trying to keep people apart, if I have a common place, then I'm gonna have mixing of communities, I don't know that'd be a good idea.
That, that, that's one of the problems that they wanted to weight on, one of the, I don't know, you guys probably watched some of that, but. What they really want people, it's not the kids, it's not really the kids that they're worried about, it's the adults mingling and co-mingling. That's one of the problems that they were really concerned about from a medical standpoint, I don't know if that's right or not, but that's what they talked about.
I mean, a lot of the, they're talking about all this other stuff, but they're talking about all, they're double talking. Because they're saying if we all wear a mask, we're okay, but now they're talking about they don't want anybody around each other, right?
There's the, here, they were.
I'm all confused on everything, really.
And they were questioning whether the bathroom should be opened because.
Something from different towns would go into the same bathroom, so.
I would hate to see outside.
Dark corners of the building, then outside's gonna get a lot of.
I would make the motion to approve the language as Kasia approved it on there, December eighth.
Okay, so I just wanna understand that, that's two and two, is that that because the language is up to two, so I think it should be very specific.
So we would allow as, or it's up to two.
But we could still restrict it then, the one.
My motion is to approve it as up to two.
Second.
Aye.
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 Yeah, I can't even vote right now because I don't, I'm not comfortable yet. Is it not divesting?
I guess our Kasia is reading.
You can abstain.
Okay, abstain.
That's, yeah.
No, I, I, so.
I know, I'm so confused.
Yeah, I.
I think that, yeah, we, while we're discussing some of it.
Up to two isn't two.
Yeah, we need to be specific.
Up to two isn't two, so what we're trying to decide is, what is that up to two, right?
Right.
So.
Mister Hewitt, yeah, wait.
So if we approve it as one, then that we're not. Kasia's allowing it up to two, so if we restrict it to one, that's not what it.
Up to two is.
Maximum to two. That means there're gonna be zero.
It says up to two.
Right.
So we would still have the flexibility to adjust the number.
Uh, there's a motion and a second, and we've started voting on the language written by Kasia.
Okay, no, sorry.
No, I, I gotta say no on that.
No.
No, but no, no.
I think I'm gonna vote no, but I wanna discuss it more, that's not really a long vote though.
Exactly, I'm gonna discuss it.
Um, here's my question, I don't, the up to two is bothering me, I would rather put a number there, if we're gonna make it two, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
If we're gonna make it one, let's make it one, but, so I would take the same motion that Mike made, and I would say we allow two people per.
Parent guardian.
Parent guardian. Under, everything else in Kasia's deal stays that way.
For home and visitor.
So we would have two for home and visitor, subject to change by board approval.
With the language, I can't add, sorry.
With the same language as the Kasia.
Well, I was gonna say with the language.
The Kasia order stays as it is, just make the number two instead of up two.
Up two is not two, up to two is not two.
Up two means, and if I, if I don't like you coming in, I can say bye, we're, we're limiting it to one, that's the way you're saying, you can have two. And if we need to change that, we can change that. But I don't wanna tell people that I'm gonna change that on a, on a rotating basis, if it's two right now, then it's two forever until we come back in and vote differently.
So we have, we have a home game Friday?
Yes.
We have a home game next week?
Yes.
One or two?
Two.
Two, so that's three home games, then we get into the first of July, or July, January. Would we have a home game the Tuesday before January meeting?
No, because we're not allowed to play till the eighth, and we go to Linden on the eighth, and then we would come back and I move that fifth game to the eleventh, and that would be a home game.
So we would have a very good idea if.
Three games.
Three, we would have three home games worth of expertise.
We have four. Before the board meeting, we have four.
To, to see if this was good or, or needs to be amended.
Yeah, I would love to have an idea who we're playing.
The fifth got moved to the eleven.
Uh, let's see, we play Santa Fe Trail this Friday, um, Central Heights, Chase County. Um, top of my head, there's another school, I don't know who it is.
I'm just kinda thinking, trying to think of people who bring, bring the big crowds.
Santa Fe Trail bring a big crowd.
Santa Fe Trail usually does.
Well, and the, for me, the reason I, I voted in favor is, is I, I would like to allow Tony with some flexibility with this because of, because of the unknown. You know, if we stipulated it two, and all of a sudden Friday, we got four hundred people that show, or maximum number of people that show up, and that's not a good situation. I would like to be able to give him the opportunity to then change it as he sees fit for the next.
I don't know how you're gonna change it at that game though.
Not at that game, but I'm saying the, the game after that.
We can always have a working, change it.
My suggestion is to put the verbiage to the visiting and the home, us and our visiting schools. We would like for you to watch your child and then go. It was, I didn't know we had a choice in middle school, by the way, honestly, cause I was scared of Tim coming to track me, I'm just.
That's the way I wanted it.
But, I'm, and that's what I was kind of, when I was adding on to your motion, is. Allowing two home and visitors with the verbiage in the activities of day to.
Leave when your.
Leave when your child isn't playing, you don't need to be there, I mean. Now.
Tough to enforce, so.
It is tough to enforce, and the adult, you also have the JV slash varsity having to wait a game in between, I understand. I just think, parents are, I would say, majority of parents are so excited that they actually get to be in the building watching their student. That they will do what they need to do to keep safe, to keep distance, and to go. I will be happy to go sit in my car for an hour and a half between the varsity and the JV game if I need to. I'm just, I would do that just because I'm so excited to actually be able to be in person.
I, I don't think that would be our expectation to be, is if you have a kid that's gonna participate.
No, I'm not suggesting you having to do that, but, but I do, I'm just saying, I, I'm just.
I don't want anybody listening here to think they gotta do that.
Oh, well, I'm just saying, I think the general consensus is that people are, will do what is the safest and what makes most sense. So if a parents of the two varsity, a girl's varsity. And we say we would prefer that once your child is done playing, that you leave, and then they go home, because they don't have a son playing, boys varsity the game after. Just like in middle school, I expect that they probably will do that, I don't know, I don't think they're just gonna be hanging out, we're fine, we're in a pandemic, it's not, we're in a different.
Yeah, I think it's just the visitor's side that I'm worried about, that's the one piece of my day.
I'm worried about the visitor's side too.
And if I think about the bench.
But if they're twelve and they're two, that's twenty four people.
I know, I'm just thinking about the, each side bench, right, and we gotta put the six foot around the players that are already taken up multiple rows in order to social distance, so that limits even further, just like the two Ls where you can actually put parents.
I don't know if we have to just stay on visitor's side.
Well, there won't be an L, there'll be straight up, will just be those sections, so everything behind the teams will not be any seats, nobody will be allowed to sit there.
A bunch of seats.
Cause the team themselves try to, I mean, from a, so.
The team has been taking two to three rows, and then I have my A V club.
But, no, we never said that the visitors couldn't sit on the other side.
No, they can't, I'm, I'm sorry, I wouldn't want them to because mixing in the crowds.
I'm suggesting not mixing the crowd, putting a line and saying, this section can be visitors, but, I don't know, it's.
That works, that works well, we have the band in there, but with the band, that complicates that.
It works.
With the visitors, there is no band, there is no.
So the maximum you're gonna have, right?
And most of them aren't gonna play any cheer team either, they might be in dance, but they're not gonna have any, maybe we limit that they just bring, that they don't bring a cheer team, and then all of a sudden, you're talking about just players and parents.
Players and parents.
If you're talking to visiting team.
Do they, do we have the flexibility to limit them to bring a cheer team?
Yeah, we, I mean, we, as a, as your home site, you can.
It would dictate that.
Do what you want, I mean, you can tell nobody to come, I mean, you can tell no cheerleaders to come and just players, I mean. You have, each school is allowed the flexibility to do what they need to do with home site.
It's just the reality, yeah.
We definitely have more of a challenge on the visitor's side than we do at some other schools.
Correct.
So I think if, if we just, if we stipulated that we wanted them to leave after their kids were gone, done playing.
Also, she just.
And we had no cheerleaders at our, away cheerleaders at our venue, that would help.
There's also two gyms, remember, playing at the same time, the whole time, so the visitors isn't always gonna be the whole girls' moms and the whole dads and the whole boys' moms and guys. At the same time. The only way would be is, as you mentioned, Mister Hewitt, is at the end of the varsity where people like to stay and watch.
That's when it gets full.
And we'll see a lot of that coming up right now, cause you're gonna get the, I guess, the worst case now, when you have Santa Fe Trail coming, cause they're gonna bring most people, you have Central Heights gonna probably bring at least nine people. Not picking on any of them guys, but when you base on, when you watch the crowds and most things, Santa Fe Trail's got a big following, Central Heights done, Linden's gonna have, but they're not in this first three or four game set. It'll give us a pretty good idea of what we got and how they're gonna react, and then if we need to change it, we can always change it in January.
I'd like to ask Patty to repeat the motion that's on the floor.
There is a lot of.
You made.
You started one.
It never got seconded.
I seconded it, you guys were just talking, so I, you could.
Okay, sorry.
It just, it's the same motion they made, Mike, except up two.
To make the same motion, Mike made, only we're gonna make it two, not up two, we got total two.
So there would be no flexibility in that.
It'll be two people for everybody that's here. And then for, what's in Kasia's guidelines?
Yeah, but we would have to meet again and change that.
Yes, which we're gonna have three games that are gonna be played during this time.
And what's the benefit of that over the up to two, where it gives them the flexibility to limit if they need to, it's up to two, not.
How are you gonna, are, you can't limit that at a game. I can't read it in the future, I gotta see.
Not during.
You're saying we're gonna have to come back and vote every time we see an adjustment, I think we need to give our administration the flexibility.
I don't think we're gonna do that.
I think we're gonna make this, and block and white when we know where we're at, but right now, we're guessing on everything, so which one do you wanna guess on? I'm gonna guess in favor of the parents, if they wanna come watch their kids play, I wanna be able to watch their kids play. If they don't wanna watch their kids play, don't come.
Up to two allows for that, and tell me you have a problem.
No, it doesn't, not if you decide that we're going one, or we're going zero.
That does not make that.
For the safety of our participants, and, uh, people active.
We're not, we don't know these numbers, we tell people, come. I made a motion, it's been seconded, so.
You ready to vote?
Yeah.
Aye.
What is the motion? The motion is to allow two.
Uh, here, I'll read it.
Same thing as Kasia.
Effective Thursday, December tenth through January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one, enters classic activities will allow for attendance of, of two. Parents, guardians per participant's family, as allowed by local board of education or health department restrictions.
But you wanna change that to attendance two parents, not up two?
I took, I took out, I took the words up to out, and I left the word two in.
He took out.
Do we need to specify the participants groups? If we're not going to allow all of them, or, or, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I don't know.
Yeah, I, it's to the players, because we're not, the way I'm thinking is, we're not gonna allow the cheer to answer the band from business, they're not going to. Yeah, I, it's to the players, because we're not, the way I'm thinking is we're not gonna allow the cheer to answer the band from business, they're not governing it most of the time. The only one that affects is maybe the cheer. Then you can do that, I mean, to me, you're gonna limit people, you want players and you want.
I guess we have to approve this, that first and then we can always go back in.
Exactly.
This motion, this motion does not have that in there.
Although.
We we can go back and add.
If you can add.
Hold vote yes to this motion.
Yes.
So is this two and two, that's what this motion is, okay, I'm Dave.
Nate.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries five two.
I think we'll.
Now I would like to add. And this is gonna come from you, Tony, and because you're the one, this is gonna affect most of the high school. The cheerleaders. Do we need to eliminate cheer coming from the other squads? The ones it's gonna affect in this first three game set is gonna be Santa Fe Trail.
Well, they're limited to eight already, you know, the schools that had sixteen cheerleaders, they're not allowed to do that anymore, they're only allowed eight, they don't sit in the stands. Typically, parents don't come for cheerleaders, so I I mean, I don't know, I. If they're gonna come to watch the game, they're gonna be allowed to or be dishonest and say I'm a cheerleader parent and come in, so.
So that's not anything that we're really be too concerned about, then, you're sure.
Well, I'm concerned about all of it.
But the numbers for the visitor side, cause we're gonna be twelve players, that's twenty four.
I think you're right, if they if they leave, I think we'll be all right.
Good.
If they don't, I don't think we will be.
So does anybody wanna do anything on the cheerleading or wanna leave it just specifically how Casia has it?
Uh, if Tony's comfortable, then I'm comfortable.
Give me the flexibility to to, I'd be fine with that too.
We'll do that if, at January board meeting, we're gonna revisit this and that's the big thing, cause we're gonna have three games to base this off, is that not correct?
Four, yeah.
Four. And that's gonna be Central Heights, Santa Fe Trail.
Santa Fe Trail twice, actually. So this Friday is Santa Fe Trail, just varsity and JV. The other Santa Fe Trail game. No, no, I'm sorry, that's later in the season. I don't remember, I'd have to look at my calendar.
I have the, I have the activities thing open. On Friday, we have a JV and varsity only Santa Fe Trail game. For high schools and in Iowa and then on. The fifteenth is JV and varsity only with Central Heights. Then the eighteenth is Council Grove.
Central Heights should be everybody, not JV and. That should be our CT men.
Okay.
That should be a full schedule.
Okay, got it, and then the eighteenth is Council Grove. All three teams.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the Friday before Christmas break.
And that's, you're right.
Mm-hmm, those are the three home games and then the eleven.
They travel, Council Grove.
And then one in January.
And the one in January on the eleventh is Chase County. I'm confused with Council Grove, I didn't even know they were playing.
Well, they weren't.
They were.
Yeah.
They were gonna be um, remote all the way to Christmas, but then when Casia did their change to spectators. They came back in, they started session Monday.
Monday.
Okay, okay, I just wasn't, I had heard they weren't, so.
And so they.
I don't think they start until Monday.
They had another special meeting today at five o'clock.
They did?
I don't know what happened.
Let me change it again.
I would sure like to make sure that we let Santa Fe Trail. Uh, Central Heights, Council Grove and Chase County, all of them, we have free livestream. Especially Council Grove, since so many people.
So whenever I have visiting schools, I send them a Form D. And so I send them all that information, jersey color, everything, so that's just part of it.
Great. And I'd like to say that our, it's great, the streaming's been wonderful, so thank you.
Fantastic.
Those have done a great job.
Hey, the kids have done a fantastic job.
And Andy and Dustin Stuckey, working with them while.
Oh, good.
In the present time, so.
Administerative reports.
Well, thank you guys so much, I appreciate your guidance and help and that's, I know it's been difficult on everybody statewide. You know, even parents, I feel bad for them not being able to watch their kids and being there to support them. Especially those senior parents and and I know it's a tough situation, but I appreciate your guidance tonight and and I, thank you. A lot of activity still going on at the high school, regional debate is coming up here, uh, actually the eighteenth and nineteenth. Um, we've had several qualifiers for state, which that'll be in January fifteenth, sixteenth. Uh, forensics, obviously a second semester, so we haven't started that yet, Scholars Bowl, they have gone fully virtual. I know they listed them in this Casia thing on the limited spectators or parents, but um, they've they've gone totally virtual anyway, so. Um, but um. Uh, the league is on the twenty eighth and we follow up with regional and state in February. Band and choir, they both are looking at doing some sort of online virtual uh, program recording. I know Mrs. Ryan talked to me today about doing a uh, acting class, she has one of her acting classes. And each kid's gonna do their part at home and then she's gonna put them all together and put the play together and then livestream that. I think that's gonna be in April, so it's gonna be second semester, but I know they both are trying to do something so they can showcase their kids. In band and choir, because we haven't had any concerts and been able, not been able to do that, so, um, but they are looking. So you know that they can get those kids out on camera or so parents can see how they're playing. Plant Hills League Tournament is in January and I just give you a little heads up. Um, traditionally, we played this at ESU, we're not gonna be playing there this this year. Um, the the, um, ESU's kinda doing some different things, Lyon County's doing some different things. Uh, ESPY or their their volunteer group that um, volunteers and runs basically the program, the scorers and announcers and the gates. Usually they're all elderly folks and so they're not gonna do that, so we lost all our help for that tournament as well. So we are probably gonna be hosting those at different school sites. So the number one seed of the boy's side will probably host the top half of the bracket. Four, five, six will be hosted by the five seed, boys and girls, so we could have up to four different locations for that. Which may not be bad at spreading people out, but uh, just be prepared for that, we may even, I mean, if we're, I mean, one seed. Um, boys and girls, you know, I don't know how that's gonna work, honestly, I mean, we'd be hosting four games. Possibly Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. So we went back to the format before where um, girls will play on Monday night, boys will play Tuesday night and then girls Thursday, Saturday and then boys Friday, Saturday. So we will be running that format uh, for next year, but that's not till mid-January, we'll be meeting before that and I'll be able to give you more information. But I just kinda heads up how that's changed. Wrestling, we have um, fourteen boys out, um, their first meet was last Saturday. Uh, we had several went undefeated, four match, four and oh, um, they go to Clay Center tomorrow. Uh, or Saturday, they're leaving at four thirty in the morning, because they gotta be in Clay Center to weigh in at seven AM. Um, so with the weather coming in, we're gonna keep an eye on that, so you just know. Um, but um, they're not allowing any spectators as their numbers in their county are still up. Um, one of the things I wanna make you aware of that I talked to Mr. Hutton about. Is uh, one of my concerns about no spectators or no crowds. Each home game, it costs me about six hundred and twenty dollars just for officials, JV and varsity. With no revenue coming in, my activity account is just gonna plummet. Um, and so. Through basketball season, I usually spend about fifty five hundred, fifty six hundred dollars on officials alone. Um, baseball softball season's coming up, hopefully, and I have no revenue there. Usually my winter sports and fall sports carry me through the spring. Um, that that's gonna be another two thousand, track is about fifteen hundred. Uh, that doesn't include other expenses like metals and and things like that, so. Um, I currently have a balance of about seven thousand dollars in my account, activity account. So that's gonna be gone pretty fast. If I'm, and I'm gonna get a little bit back with this, allowing some parents, but it won't be enough to carry me through, so. At some point this spring, just know that um, without a revenue, it's gonna hit us at some point.
Why wouldn't we fix that now, if we have the COVID money, why don't we take that money, use it now?
I don't know if they'd let us use COVID money for this one, probably, I don't think so.
I don't know, I don't know where I'm gonna be at, I know I'm gonna be short, I don't know how short. Um, you know, in January it comes back and we're, January twenty eighth, twenty ninth rolls around and there's all spectators come through. Heck, I might pack the car out, you know, pack the house and make a ton of money and and not be a concern, I don't see that happening.
I would ask that we make a phone call to Gary Morris from tomorrow, cause I do believe you can use COVID money for this, it was just talked about from another school that had that question, so.
Really?
I mean, it's because of COVID you're not getting your money, so.
Exactly, so call Gary, I I believe you can set aside money into that for that. The the secret is, if they say it has to be used by the end of the year, but you know you're gonna lose it, we're already gonna lose fairly going into that, so.
Well, we would make, we'd just write a check.
Right, there's two number ones, there's the Carris and then the Coe County money versus.
You're talking about Sparks money on this?
Sparks money, I don't know if you can use that one. The money from the county though, I believe you can. That's how they talk about it.
Sparks. Yeah, I mean, I I would, I probably would have already done that, but I I didn't.
I would call him and ask him, perhaps.
Okay, we can sure do that, cause that would help a lot. It is, I mean, that's.
And and when it comes to baseball season, I'll probably ask him for some money. And that's all I have, thank you people, we appreciate it.
Um, it's, in the elementary school, um, I just want you guys to be aware that Mrs. DeLong, our music director in K five, has um, been posting um. Musical Christmas cards with our K through five students and those are gonna be posted on Facebook and our webpage um, as of tomorrow. And I think they're going to post like three uh, classes at a time, so it will run between, I think, well, it will probably go start Friday, excuse me, not tomorrow, but Friday. All the way through next Friday, so be looking on our Facebook page, she's done a really good job with that and so have the students. Um, I watched them this afternoon and they are quite comical, but also very entertaining. Um, grade cards, I think I mentioned this last time, but I just want you guys to be aware of this and our parents that are listening. That our grade cards will go out with students on Wednesday, January sixth. And that will include for K two, Ames web reports, which will be the fall and winter um, local assessments that we do. And um, also the ACT reports for, which is the ACT aspire reports, um, which is also done in the fall and the winter. And so they'll be having some comparisons there and that will be for grades three through five. Um, last week and this week, the teachers have been really working hard and finishing up those local assessments, which again is the Ames web. And the um, ACT aspire, I just wanted to thank all of them and especially thank Kathy Reed and Susan Smith. For doing all the Ames web testing in K two for our school. And uh, the last thing I had is K kids' Christmas party is going to be next Friday, we are going to keep our social distancing at the elementary gym. But this is just a way for us to kinda celebrate being in school, yay, we're so excited and um, just having a great semester so far. And that will be during school time, during their PE and music time. That's it.
Uh, middle school, uh, our student council is still doing their adopt a family this December and they've had to. Do a little different this year than they have in the past, normally they take a bus and they go up to Walmart in Topeka and they take a group of kids and go out shopping and. And buy everything they need and obviously, we're not doing that this year, so I think they've been doing some online shopping. And uh, we'll try to get that to the families and um, there, we're helping out six families with thirteen students in this family, so that's what they're working on right now. Um, they're doing a really good job, still trying to help those families out. Uh, basketball, both our teams are doing very well, tomorrow we play at Linden, we'll see. Uh, based on their board meeting tonight, how many people we get to take over there and we'll be sending out notifications to parents tomorrow morning. As soon as I know, and we also have a JV tournament at Central Heights. Uh, which is only with three teams this year, because Wes Franklin's just now getting going, again, playing after they've been on remote learning for a while. Uh, so again, we'll send out that information when we get it from them on how many fans they're allowing. Uh, we got our varsity tournament coming back right after, it'll be that first week we come back and play games. Uh, that should be hosted by Wes Franklin and again, with everything going on, we'll have some more discussions, um. Maybe doing something similar to high school, we just don't know yet, uh, we're gonna be meeting on that and discussing that. And then due to missing some games, we might play a couple games after that tournament this year. Um, just to get in a couple of those ones we missed with some other schools, but in middle school, they start wrestling, a lot of schools start wrestling. Right after basketball's over, so some of those schools may not be interested in playing, but if we can pick up one or two more games, we'd be interested in doing that that next week, but. We're also not gonna stretch it out till March either, so we'll try to wrap it up that week after the tournament. We've got in quite a few games so far, so I think we're in, we're in good shape, I think we're pretty lucky. So then we're, we're all ready for Christmas break.
From where next week has been canceled, right?
Yes, cause that is actually the first day they're supposed to be coming back to school, so we will not be playing Council Grove on Monday.
Alright, I'd like to take a minute just to say thank you for the teachers, custodians, administration, everything else, because. In my travels and tribulations, there are a ton of people that have mentioned that they sure wish they lived in a state city and had their kids in school and not done remotely. So thank you to all you guys, thank you to the custodians, thank you to the teachers for doing what it takes to keep us in school. Um, with that, I would move, we go into executive session to discuss supplemental uh, positions, certified positions. And administrative contract extension pursuant to the coma and the open meeting, we'll resume the board meeting at. Eight thirty eight.
Uh, yeah.
With the administration.
At least one second. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.